2010, if I could ask the superintendent to please take the roll call.
Anne Mayer.
Here.
Carol Chellman.
Here.
Rebecca Emerson.
Here.
Dexter Legg.
Here.
Kent LaPage.
Here.
Ann Walker. Mitch Schulman.
Here.
Tom Martin.
Here.
Leslie Stevens.
Here.
Clay Haywood.
Here.
Linda Brulette.
Here.
Savannah Fadaro.
Okay, if you would all join me for a moment of silence and then we'll do the pledge of allegiance, and the flag is on the other side of the room.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes of November 9th, 2010.
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. So what we have here is that we have a special comment, there are two people signed up, then we're going to have a special presentation, and then we might entertain the motion to sort of move Kathleen up to talk a little bit about policy, so we can do that earlier in the evening, if that's okay with people. Okay. So, public comment, there are two people signed up to speak, each person will get three minutes, so I'd like to have Matt Dwyer. Where would you like them to speak? There's a microphone near the bookcase.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity to speak about the Fact Finders report, and I just wrote a brief comment, and I'll just read it quickly. All that is necessary for the triumph of evil is for good people to do nothing. I am asking you, the good people of the school board, to accept the Fact Finders report recommendations. Fact Finders recommendations are a reasonable solution to the current impasse between the school custodians union and the city of Portsmouth. A vote to accept the Fact Finders report does not mean that you agree with every recommendation. A vote to accept the Fact Finders report does mean that you would like to forward the recommendations to the city council for final approval. Again, I respectfully and humbly request that you accept the Fact Finders report as a show of support for a fair and reasonable resolution to the current contractual impasse. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then we have Mr. Patrick Ellis.
Good evening, I just wanted to address a couple of minor items, but bring them to your attention for your consideration. The first, I just wanted to let you know that there was a really successful math night at Don Darrow School a couple of weeks back, that my family attended, I think there were about forty-five families in attendance, and it was part of the initiative revolving around the school in need of improvement and the actions that the community are taking to try to push things forward there. While there, I did observe that we didn't have any recycling bins out, and I've mentioned this to the board before, I had to go back in the kitchen to find the recycling bin for my bottle, and it appears, I'm not sure whether or not you have investigated, maybe you found out that you're in a contract that you can't get out till it's up, but again, the city now has a contract that allows all plastics, one through seven, plus metal, plus paper, to be recycled. At this point in our schools, if you think about the types of waste that we produce, and I'll add on top of that, that at least at Don Darrow, we're now composting some of the food waste that's produced there as well, which is another great initiative, but at this point, if we have recycling of this type, the zero-sort recycling, plus composting, our waste volumes, our waste tonnage, the amount that we have to pay for, should be negligible. All paper that are produced in the classroom, all food waste, almost all containers that food is prepared in and brought to school in can be recycled. It's an area that the school board, I think if you haven't had the opportunity to do so, you should take a look at moving forward into next year in terms of how to control some of our costs. Schools probably can't get all the way down to a zero-waste proposition, but with, when I think about the types of waste that are produced in a school, it's hard to see that there are significant quantities of materials that must be actually thrown away. The other thing that I wanted to bring up is also noticing in walking around the school at Don Darrow, my recollection is that in, I think, 2007, the city received grant funding for improvements for encouraging children to walk to school. Part of that grant money was supposed to go towards improving the access, I think it's off of Garfield towards the back of Don Darrow, and painting bike lanes. It's been, I think, at least two years, I think three years though, and none of those improvements have been made at Don Darrow School. My recollection from my time on the board is that there were improvements made at the other schools, perhaps some of that grant money was spent on a bike rack, but I don't think that's the case, it kind of feels like Don Darrow kind of got left behind with that grant money. Not sure if it's all gone, but I know that the intent had been there to make those improvements. I hope you take a look at where those grant monies went and whether or not those improvements can be done. Thank you. Last thing.
Go ahead.
Hold as firm as you can on the budget, I know that they're asking for zero percent, but make the case, I thought the school board did a great job last year at the book that you put together, I hope you do something similar this year, it was an invaluable tool to talk to people about the school budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Okay, anyone else? That's it. So we'll move on the agenda, so we have a special presentation this evening, we're here at the middle school in the library, and so, yeah, so Mr. Stokel, might you introduce the seventh grade team here in a little quick overview? And note, emphasis on the word "quick."
I know that the board members had an opportunity to see some of the projects that are going on through the IRA grant, that's the grant that the middle school was awarded about a year ago, it's $150,000, of that $150,000, $30,000 is for professional development, $20,000 for evaluation, and $100,000 for equipment. This evening, our seventh grade team, two math teachers, Christine Kessel and Andrea Heath, and the social studies folks, Holly Littlefield and Jocelyn Garganter, are going to show you a snippet of the project that they've been working on together through the math and social studies curriculum, and again, this is a project which has come about by using that equipment, that technology, through that IRA grant, so now I'll turn it over to Andrea.
Thanks. So I just want to thank you all for having us here, we're pretty excited to show what we, the kids and ourselves, have accomplished this year. I'm going to kind of give it in a nutshell because there's a lot of stuff that went into it, but historically, seventh grade has always done walking tours, so we've gone to cemeteries and we've pulled the curriculum into getting out into the community and really learning about the historical places around Portsmouth. So it was great when we got this technology grant, that since we already collaborated between math and social studies, we really could use this technology to enhance that curriculum. So it really let us take what we've already done and enhance it even further. So this is just kind of a snippet of the project, we called it the iWalk project, iWalk Portsmouth, because we have kids out walking in the community, so we're here just to kind of give you an overview and talk a little bit about some of the math and social studies goals, as well as the technology goals. So what we did with the project was the kids first, since they had been out on some tours, they had an idea about what it was like to go look at the architecture and, you know, look at some old buildings and start talking about, okay, what used to be here, what's here now, how has that changed? So we used that as kind of a pre-tour, so they got used to walking around, just got used to, okay, here's how we behave out in public, here's what we're looking for, things like that, and then we had them come back and through the social studies piece, research some different places in Portsmouth, so they used the technology to research what went into the buildings. After they did the research, we put together targeted tours for each group, and then as the math piece came in, we took the kids out on the actual tours they created and measured speed, distance, time, and kind of had them calculate what's the feasible plan if they were to give this walking tour, you know, to members of the public, what, how to plan around what's feasible to accomplish. So that's kind of the nutshell version, so we're going to get into a little bit of that today and then some standards, which I'll pass off to Jocelyn.
All right. I'm just going to talk a little bit about the social studies portion of the project. We do collaborate, collaborate a lot in seventh grade, and we usually do it with all of the content areas, we usually use, we also usually include English and science, and they did have a big piece in this because they allowed us to have some great flexibility in order to get this project done, so we always thank our colleagues for that because it's difficult whenever we come to scheduling. So the first thing we always look at whenever we do anything, especially project-based learning activities, is we always look at the regular standards and what standards are we going to meet based on this project. So we did a few social studies standards which are listed up here, and the way that we met those standards is we used a Moodle site, our seventh grade social studies classes already used a Moodle site, we're teaching kids how to use Moodle, and basically what that is, it's almost like an online class, and kids can go on there and access resources, they can post things on forums, so we're teaching them how to be appropriate in that type of environment. So what they did and how we managed that was, we decided to use Moodle to limit the resources the kids could use, so they were not allowed to Google at all to find their research on Portsmouth, they were required to use nine local sites that we posted on there, which gave a little frustration at first, but then they realized how much if they dug, they could really use those sites to use, to get to high-quality research. So we limited that and used it like an online textbook that we created, so it was in real time for the kids based on what their needs were. The second thing that we did is, we really focused the attention on doing the project in math class, so the social studies teachers went and took over the math classrooms and the kids walked in and said, what are we doing in here? So we did the move instead of the kids doing the move, and we set up learning stations in those classrooms, just like you would do regardless of whether you had technology or not, but we used the technology to set up learning stations, and we found that pretty interesting because at each station there would be two tablet PCs and two iPod touches, and the kids would decide in their group of four, what was the best tool for the job. So if I'm doing quick research, usually they would choose the iPod Touch, other kids would choose to use the tablet, sometimes using the pen, sometimes using the keyboard, but they found that they would say, oh, this is great for pictures, but I need to look up further, now that I found what I want, I'll use the tablet. So even using strategies to decide what tool they were going to use was great, and we were able to guide them for the best tool for the job. The first thing they did is they did a little practice research, we just said, okay, you can research anything in Portsmouth that's of interest to you, and once they trial ran that, they ended up with a four-block radius in their group, and they were required to then go through and only use those nine sites to get to their particular location. The kids were required to find four locations in their group, one was a historical location in Portsmouth, one was a reuse of space, one was someplace you could rest or relax or hang about, and one was a place of visual interest, something that caught your eye, and that was a challenge, just to look up, but as we went on our tours, kids would come back and say, that place, I wrote down the address, but I don't know what it is, so they would use the tools to be able to find out what that location was because it caught their eye and they never knew what it was. Some of the things that we continue to focus on was that we know best practices are to allow kids to work collaboratively as well as to work independently, the technology was a huge help in that area, because sometimes they want to be side-by-side helping each other out, other times you just want to be on your own, doing your focused research. So we found that that actually really fed into regular project-based learning activities, the technology really took that to a whole new level. The last thing was, the kids really, we found, got excited about digging deeper into the research once they got a little hook into something, and we were able to guide them, I think on a deeper level, as opposed to saying, here, go Google it, go figure out wherever it is, the kids were actually digging into local sites and linking out through our local sites, and we found later that they came back and said, I made my mom bring me to that building because I couldn't find enough on it, so they came back in and said, well, let's do a little research and see what else we can find, but they were getting their families excited about what we were doing as well, and coming back in and bringing resources to us and saying, I also found this and I went through Moodle, I promise, instead of just saying, I Googled it and I took the first thing that I found. So I'm going to pass along, and Christine's going to talk about the math.
So you know that we had a four-block radius walking tour, I guess it would be more of a rectangle, but, but basically, what we needed to do with our students was to collect some data, to, in order for them to be able to create a feasible walking tour, we needed to make sure that they could figure out about how long would this take, if you are a seventh grader in Portsmouth, how long would it take you to walk this specific block, stopping at certain places along the way? So what we did, as Andrea had mentioned, we've typically gone, taken our students out on trips around the city in the past, so we used that to collect data. We took them on several different walking tours in October during kneecap testing, and it was a nice diversion for them, and we also got to do some really great walks, collect some data. So we gave them some iPod touches, and we used timers, and what we did was just take some walks and we would, we led the students first on the way and showed them what a walking tour might be like. They collected data of specific points, so every ten minutes or so, they would track how long has it been and where are we? When we got back to the school, what they would do is figure out, well, how far was that, and what was our average walking speed? So they knew the average walking speed for seventh-grade middle school students was about 1.9 miles per hour. Then what we did was, we planned a walk around a given block, as Jocelyn had mentioned, they had to have their four stops. We used Yahoo Maps to estimate the distance of the trip, and we calculated the time that it would take for them to do that using the average data that we had collected. Then, after they had figured out, okay, well, what do we think is going to happen when we go out on our walk? We actually went on the walks and they collected the data, again, on the actual trip. When we got back to the classroom, we used the tablets, and I'll show you those in just a minute, but we used the tablets and some MIMI software that we got with the tablets for the students to graph, first they created tables of their pre-walk data and their post-walk data, and then they would graph it, and then they compared the results. Why is what we thought was going to happen different from what actually happened, and how is that representation, how does that representation appear in the table, how does that representation appear in the graph? So, I'm just going to show a little bit about the technology that we used in order to do this. One of the things that we used, oh, can I switch this? Yes, source. Bear with me, we may have to turn the light on so you can see. Is that better? Can you see that better with the light? Okay. So, this is the iPod Touch, and this is just a pedometer app, so the students would put the pedometer up, we put, and this is a free app that we could download onto the iPod touches, and we had the students put this in their pocket and just walk along, they loved having it, of course, because they're really fun to have, and they would collect the data. I don't know if you can see, but it calculates the steps, it also will calculate the time and the distance, so we could use that information just to compare, well, the rate that we collected on the various walks, how did that compare to what we actually did? And it was very interesting because it came out to be the same, so that was really great for the kids to realize that, that the data that we actually collect is real and it actually applies when we do it on our tour. Then, what did we do? Oh, am I showing this part?
You can.
Okay. So this is the iPad, can you just?
Secret.
Oh, can you find the picture too? Sure can, I'll have you go in a little more. So this is just a picture of what the walk looks like. So a typical walk, we had a four-street area, and then the four stops along the way, and this is one, Andrea's going to talk about it a little bit more, but this is how students would Yahoo Maps, and they would actually enter the street addresses, and they could figure out where they were along the walk. Then, this is the fun part, we got back to the classroom, and they had this data, they had their, the data that they had collected in a table, and they had to graph it, and we got these really great Tissue tablets, I don't know if you've ever seen a tablet before, but they're these laptops that flip around, and the screen goes down, and they have a little pen in them, so they could take the pen out, they're great for graphing because the students can use this and just draw on it, write on it, and they can graph their data, and we'll show you what that looks like, and everything they can show you is a student-created, you can do any of it, and you're going to be wild-eyed, it's really, really great. And I think this. Do they get it?
Yep.
Oh.
How are we handling this?
Oh, it's funny. Sorry. I'm sorry, this happens sometimes, but it's going to come back on. There we go. So while, what Andrea's doing is just logging back in, but we have some examples of the student work to show you, while that's loading, I'll just tell you a little bit about it, what the requirements were. They had to, after they collected all of their information, they had to assemble it in some way. So we used this MIMI software, which, MIMI is kind of like if you've heard of Smartboard before or Prometheum boards, it's similar to something like that. This is the teacher-interactive tool that we use, and so, we just put, this is portable, we can put it anywhere, and basically, we can turn the circle to, into a whiteboard. I sound like a salesperson, right? But it is pretty cool. So, but there's also this software that goes with the MIMI, this little MIMI thing, I guess I'm being fired now, but not, not at all. But the students had the software here, they pulled it up, we gave them a quick tutorial and said, okay, now that you know how to, you've had a little bit of experience with this, now what we want for you to do is to, you have to create one, a title page, it has to have a background, it has to have pictures in it, there are all kinds of things that they had to include in it. Then the next slide had to incorporate their pre-walk data and their post-walk data in a table. The next one had to be that same data graphed, and the final one had to incorporate some cameras, because I forgot to tell you that we did use technology that was already in the building too, which, one of those were just some digital cameras that we had, that students took pictures of the sites that they visited along the actual walks that they did, so we had them incorporate that. Some of the kids that, once they actually had finished those four slides, they even learned how to record sound, so they had, they all had to write up research, and they recorded that and put that into their projects too, so we had a wide range of capabilities being demonstrated just within those four slides. Great?
There's some dead source on there.
Yeah. Okay, there we go. So I'll go through this pretty quickly, these are, we have two examples. Oh, sorry. We have two examples of student work to show, so they all had to create a title page, then they had to show their two graphs, the pre-walk, post-walk, this was done with a stylus pen on the tablet, so they were able to pull the software up on the computer, using the tablet pen, they could write right on the screen, and it went right on to the slide. So that's one of the nice benefits of the tablet. This is their graph, so again, all written in by hand with the stylus, plotted the points, made a key title, so there was a few things they had to follow. This goes back to the map, the Yahoo map, part of the social studies piece. In math, when they found their maps on the iPad, we were able to take a snapshot of the picture and then upload it to the program. So using the iPad, they mapped out their route, took a picture of it, and then uploaded it, and then paired it with pictures that they took along their way on their tour and compiled that into a slide in social studies. Here's another example, so just another way to look at it, again, the two tables, graphs, so they're able to put in a background. Some groups were able to, if they were head enough, they were able to voice record using the iTouches, their research about each place that they went to, so they could hold the iTouch, talk their research into it, and then put it in as a soundbite to go with it. Again, and then just another example of the Yahoo map in the middle, and then the pictures around it. So that just kind of gives you, these are two kind of authentic student work samples that came out of this. And then Holly's going to speak on her piece.
So the issue of engaging our students into 21st century learning, one of the things that we're particularly proud of at Portsmouth Middle School is how we engage students of all varied learning styles, and I just wanted to show you this picture because this is a student who has some sensory language motor issues, and this student's assignment on the walks was to be the photographer who documented the work of other students. So I think this is really exceptional, and the student was able to understand that her job was not to photograph just students, but to see them at work. So that as we move on to the next one, one of the things that we really were excited about was that all the photos, as everybody mentioned, were already taken by the students, but these are interesting pictures because this documents the math assignments that they had in terms of collecting the data. And for a reflective piece, we looked at the ISTE standards, particularly in terms of good digital citizenship. We were very interested in getting students to have feedback and to have a positive dialogue, which of course is why we like Moodle, again, because Moodle has a forum which is very safe, the only people that can be on the forum are members of our Moodle site. So the students were asked to answer three questions, they were asked to address something that they learned about Portsmouth, which was really interesting to see the students talk about how surprised they were how big it was, or how many interesting buildings they were. The second thing was to talk about two to five new pieces of technology, and many students addressed this very specifically in terms of learning how to use Moodle, making comparisons between Moodle and PowerPoint, being excited about using the iTouches, enjoying the iPad, and just talking about different things that they had learned, and thinking about other pieces that they could apply at home. And the third thing was definitely something that they may have wanted to do different. What we liked about this was that after the student entered those three points, each student was responsible to reading two other people's forms and responding to them. As teachers, we can look at the information here, and we can use that to make plans for the future, because they did have some very strong opinions. There were many students that wanted to stand at each site and read their script from their research, and we just didn't have time, but that was really, a really interesting piece for them to see. So it was just really great for students who live throughout Portsmouth to be aware of things. In addition to that, in terms of engagement, there have been a lot of great things happening, and that students will come up to us and say, I've just loaded that WikiHood onto my iTouch at home, or they were really interested into the pedometer site that you found, Andrea, so it was really great that that conversation is still happening. Even from the walking tours, students come up to you and they'll say, I saw one of those Black History signs somewhere else, and so they're beginning to think of different things. found, Andrea. So it was really great that that conversation is still happening. Even from the walking tours, students come up to you and they'll say, I saw one of those Black History signs somewhere else. And so they're beginning to think of different things. What's really exciting for us in terms of engagement on this Friday is that we do have students that are really looking forward to walking to the Seacoast Repertory Theater. Many of them researched that because the purpose was to see how a building has been reused. And although students probably have been there in other, on other occasions, now they're going to go with a different light because they know the history behind it. It's also going to be exciting for us to walk down State Street when it's finished because we were there in the construction on many times. So it really would be kind of fun to see that.
That's it?
That's it?
That's it?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions?
No?
Great job.
Okay, Tom.
So are all the kids in seventh grade exposed to this?
Yes.
And so it's an opportunity for all kids who have obviously, you know, varied computer experience to really, one, just learn a whole new piece, but also to interact with their colleagues in a completely different way. So you kind of have a teaming effect of sorts?
This was a grade level. Holly and I each, each teach half of the seventh grade. Christine and Andrea each teach half of the seventh grade. They're on one team, we're on another. So we blended them. So every seventh grader had this experience.
Oh, great.
Great.
I'll just have one quick question. So, so it's clear that students, at least from what you're saying as well, that they're comfortable with this kind of technology, with iTouch, iPad. Would you say that as students are coming up into the middle school from the elementary levels, that they have, other than this ability to play with new devices and figure out how it works, do they have solid technology skills generally, would you say? Students that you see?
I would say that, I would say that they have, that they come in with some very, very solid skills and there are others that they're, that they're working on enhancing. So some, some students came in with, the Mimeo software, for example, is, a lot of students could see similarities between that and PowerPoint. So they knew how to add different features in. They could, they could put transitions into their, into their Mimeo. They, they, it was almost intuitive for them to be able to use that. And then we had other students who, who when we were creating, creating that, the pictures, the four pictures, the slides of the four pictures and the map, we had some kids that could do that very easily and we had some kids that needed a lot of support. So it's, it bears.
I think finding the medium of having the kids use it for educational purposes, like, we were shocked at how many kids came in and told us that the educational apps they added to their own iPods. I think us introducing them ways that they can use it outside of school and finding educational purposes for it, I think that was probably one of the most exciting things because they were coming back in and bringing us new apps. Well, you know, that one was pretty good, but I found this one. And I said, I would rather have a kid outside of school looking for an educational app because they think that we want to know about it and want to share it with their friends because now we have this technology that everybody can see it. If you have a classroom set of something, everybody has the ability, well, let's, let me check it out and then we'll see if it's something that we can use. And a lot of kids have continued to come back with those things, looking for reasons for us to put those iPods in their hands. So it's a nice collaborative between the two.
Excellent. Very cool. Thank you.
Oh, Clay.
I have a question. On PowerPoint, you can put a picture on top of a picture. This is a very interesting program and I was just curious. Say a student is doing a book report. Could they also put a picture on top of a picture? Even if you typed out something in, in English and, and put it right on top as if a certain person within the picture is, is saying something?
So you're asking if they, if they uploaded a picture, if they could add some text, text to it?
Yes.
Yes.
Great.
And what, what's great about it is too, they had to learn how to, in order to do that, they had to learn how to order the pictures too. And they, they really did a great job, whether they had a lot of experience with a lot of prior knowledge about, about software or whether they had, had none. They were still able to catch up to something like that very quickly, which we thought was really great.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thanks.
I would also just, you know, this was just the part that was videotaped and on television for people to see, but we had representatives of the sixth and the eighth grade here as well, set up on tables, talking and showing about different technology that they're integrating into their math and social studies and English and science classes. So I just wanted to thank you guys for showing up as well. You did a great job. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay.
What is it called?
Yeah.
Right. So I forget, you know, if anyone who could help me out here in terms of the procedure, it's, what is it called when you want to move an agenda item up?
Suspend the rules.
It's a motion to suspend the rules. Thank you, Rebecca. Would anybody like to make the motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
Okay. So we can move the old business parts of the policies up to now, to this point in time. Thank you.
I think you have first reading on another one.
Just, did we want to just do all of them or just?
I would love that.
Okay. All right. Make it quick.
So under old business, you have a second reading of a background investigation and criminal history wreckage check. There were some concerns raised and we, the subcommittee went back, had a meeting, looked at it, has made no changes to it. But for, I think Amy has shared a revised policy, an update based on three little issues, grammatical or stylistic issues in the policy. Those have been, those have been changed. So it's for a final vote this evening.
And I think that Kent had a question specifically about background checks and I had a conversation with him today about that. I don't know if your questions have been answered.
And I'll just review what we went over is, is that we do have a high incident of parents, volunteers and groups that come in to do special things with our students, whether it be through booster groups, which seems to be one of the areas and so forth. And, you know, if we're going to have a, like I said, it's a shame that we, in today's world, we have to have a policy where basically we're checking up on everybody and finding out you're guilty until proven innocent almost. So, but if we're going to have it, I think the consistency of the policy has to be there. And what Kathleen and I got into today was mostly that it's the functionality of it. And I, I think we're going to have to follow up with a number of things that ensure that if a booster group goes ahead and hires something, that the head coach has to be present when that person comes in to do something that involving students and/or a classroom and so forth. That, that again, you have your two levels of volunteers and you also have those that are paid. Anybody that is paid is then fingerprinted. And again, I think we just have a very high number of people that come into this group. Now we have entered into this new era in life of ensuring the safety for the students. Because the one area that concerned me and I brought it up with Kathleen is, is that what we don't cover is where something goes wrong and then we are brought to task on that by the public at some point. So I think as long as Kathleen follows up on that, and a large amount of this falls back on the athletic director, Russ Wilson, because that seems to be it. But it's other areas too. It's not just in athletics or in extracurricular. It can be within the classroom also, but I think we covered it pretty well today.
One of the things I said I would follow up on is, once this policy's adopted and it's disseminated through the superintendent's office, we would send instructions that any non-fingerprinted volunteer or a non-designated volunteer or an outside vendor would never be with students without being under the supervision of someone who had been fingerprinted. It's a tough balancing act to have the periodic volunteers and the non-designated volunteers who contribute a lot to the school community and would provide, you know, without them you couldn't provide a lot of the opportunities that you have. So.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Any further? So have a motion to accept. Somebody make a motion to accept that policy?
A second reading.
Okay. So this needs to be a individual vocal vote?
Carol Chellman?
Yes.
Rebecca Remison?
Yes.
Dexter Legg?
Yes.
Kent LaPage?
Yes.
Tom Martin?
Yes.
Leslie Stevens?
Yes.
Clay Haywood?
Yes.
Mitch Shulman?
Yes.
Okay. Next one.
I don't have the agenda.
People's Safety and Violence Prevention.
As you know, the state legislature requires school districts to enact a new pupil or student safety and violence prevention policy, which you were given up first draft last time, which was based almost solely on the School Boards Association model policy, which included just about word for word everything that was in the statute, not all of which is required to be in a policy. And subsequent to that, the superintendent received from SAU 50, what you have in your packets, a five pages marked draft, which is, covers some and substance, all of the required elements, though not some of the, all of the statutory references that were included in your first reading. And I think there's a memo in there explaining, explaining that. So the recommendation would be also for consistency purposes, because we have SAU 50 students and our student, I mean, I say 52 students at the high school that have a uniform policy in this area is probably very advisable. So the recommendation of the policy committee is to move to amend at this point to adopt the five-page policy marked draft and move it for second reading as amended. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Clay, I'll make a motion that the Portsmouth School Board recommends to move to amend the student safety and violence prevention policy.
As contained in the five pages.
As contained or, or presented tonight.
Okay. Pass the second.
Clear motion?
He said that, pass second reading.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Second. Any discussion on this?
Just point of clarification. That's, we'll need a second reading of that?
This is second reading.
This is second reading.
Yes, it's amending.
As amended.
Yes.
Got it.
And we have been, I have been conducting trainings on the policy. We finished the middle school and the high school and we'll be doing all the other schools as well by mid-January.
Should we also just mention that parents have come?
We had an open, we had a hearing.
I don't think we had very many people come, but we did have open meetings for people to attend.
Procedure-wise, correct.
So.
So I just have, I have a general question about the, the reach that the school department and the school board has in terms of people who might be accused of being, doing bullying, particularly cyberbullying, off, off premises, but to students in their, in their classes. You know, because you say anything that causes emotional distress. And I know that there's been some conversations about First Amendment issues here, that outside the purview of the school to have any say over it. Could you talk about that a little bit for us?
I don't think there's really significant First Amendment issues here as far as managing this in the school setting because even though there's, the general proposition is, you know, that we have free speech in this country, but it has long been held by the Supreme Court that you can regulate time, place and manner restrictions. And the famous example, you can't yell fire in a crowded movie theater. And so we have the ability to regulate student conduct in this area. So I don't see that to be a big issue as we go forward. What is going to be challenging is the nexus that this statute draws between off-campus conduct and school conduct.
Right. That's what I mean.
And that's going to be a big challenge. And there are no, there isn't a how-to with that. So we're going to have to, as I say in the training, we're always chasing technology with the law. You know, by the time we train on this and we list out the devices and the use of the devices, there's going to be something new. I mean, you should see tonight with your technology. So that is going to be a challenge and the effect that it has on students.
Okay.
Can I comment on that?
Hmm?
We did talk about that at Lincoln, our policy committee. And one of the things that we talked about is that under the definition, there are five, basically, things that need to be met, five criteria that need to be met. One of which is that it has to impact their ability to be at school and create a hostile educational environment. So that's one of the ways that I think what you're asking is how we, would we determine whether it's something we need to be involved in or not?
Right.
So I think using those five criteria is the first place we would start.
Well, I'm, I'm also just suggesting, you know, I, I read a couple of things about it too, that, you know, there might, we might move on those kinds of things. If a student does something online, on a YouTube or on a Facebook, that causes emotional distress to a fellow student, it's totally off-site, makes a person maybe not want to come to school, as to whether the school, I think we should move forward on those things anyway, whether a judge or a jury decides at some point in time, we don't have the right to do that. But.
Well, now I think you have to move forward on them, under the.
On all those things. Okay. Great.
And, you know, it's always, I always tell staff, it's better to err on the side of over-reporting than under-reporting. And this is never something we want to be on the Channel Nine news about because something went unaddressed.
Great.
I don't know, Kathleen, if you want to mention about the parallel track with harassment?
We have, and well, you bring up another good point. Somebody, I think Jocelyn Garganta yesterday, when I did the training here, pointed out that when this is disseminated, it's not something new to this district. This board was ahead of the curve and it included cyberbullying and electronic communications before the state required that. And so when it's disseminate, re-disseminated to students and their families, we don't want the, the news to be, we just adopted an anti-bullying policy. We've had this policy. It's, it's just including some new reporting and, and investigation requirements. We have also long had a harassment policy or an anti-harassment policy, which is an anti-discrimination policy, which is investigated under the terminology Title IX, which some of you might be familiar with. So the state is taking the position in some of the trainings they've done that every act of bullying is also an act of harassment, or every act of harassment is bullying. So this is something we're going to have to sort through. What we've told staff is, it's not up to them to decide, which it is. You report it to your principals or whoever's designated by building and then we'll figure it out. And sometimes it'll be a parallel track, a double investigation. The other thing I say, there's no bright lines on this anymore. That used to be something, if it was criminal, it went to the police. If it was harassment or sexual harassment, it went to Title IX. And if it was bullying, now it's, it's a lot blurrier. And so we'll work through it.
Okay. Anymore? Any other discussions? So let's go to put that to vote.
Carol Chellman?
Yes.
Rebecca Remison?
Yes.
Dexter Legg?
Yes.
Kent LaPage?
Yes.
Mitch Shulman?
Yes.
Tom Martin?
Yes.
Leslie Stevens?
Yes.
Clay Haywood?
Yes.
Okay. And then the last thing you, for you would be that, what, the one policy on first reading? Is it just one?
Child fine, yeah.
Yeah, child fine.
This policy is a required policy. Under state law and federal special education law, we had one that was old and was in need of revision and we've made those revisions. This policy requires school districts to locate, identify and evaluate students who are preschool age and have a method of disseminating information about how screenings can take place and to make those screenings available. Unlike a lot of districts where they have a single screening day, we don't do that. We have ongoing screenings for all children up to age six and every child is evaluated once they become school age. So as I said, this is a required policy and it was in need of revision.
Move the first reading of the child fine policy?
Second.
Any discussion? Take a vote on that as well?
Carol Chellman?
Yes.
Kent LaPage?
Yes.
Dexter Legg?
Yes.
Rebecca Remison?
Yes.
Sorry, my list is different. I'm sorry.
But you're here.
Mitch Shulman?
Here.
Tom Martin?
Here.
Leslie Stevens?
Yes.
Clay Haywood?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for suspending the rules.
Thanks, Kathleen.
Just for you. All right. Moving back to our agenda, item number eight, superintendent's report.
Yes. Very quickly, in your package, you have copies of Ford Administrator, the superintendent's update for the month of September, and I think Principal Shea's excellent copy of the New Franklin Gazette. He does a wonderful job. You have noticed that the Portsmouth High School Outing Club will be heading to Katernoch here in later January. You have an invitation to attend the New Hampshire School Boards Delegate Assembly. You have the opportunity to select one and an alternate to represent you at a meeting of this group mid-January. I think it's January 15th. You have two financial items from the New Hampshire Department of Education. The first really shows what Portsmouth would receive in FY-12 if adequacy was fully funded, which is to say if the collar was off and the state had all the revenue it needed, that's what we could expect to receive, some $1.7 million. But I think the key piece is the memo at the front of that correspondence, which says, no municipality should expect to receive substantially more or less than the adequacy grant you received in FY-11. And for those of us who attended last evening, we learned that that was zero. But. what we could expect to receive, some $1.7 million. But I think the key piece is the memo at the front of that correspondence, which says, no municipality should expect to receive substantially more or less than the adequacy grant you received in FY-11. And for those of us who attended last evening, we learned that that was zero. But on a happier note, you have another piece of correspondence, which says that the district will receive just under $197,000 from the Education Job Funds, federal grant. There was some $41 million that went to the state of New Hampshire in August, early September. Half of that money is now going to get distributed to school districts, and the good news in that is that we can hold on to those funds and apply them to FY-12. So those, those can help offset in next year's budget issue. You do have a recent article from Ed Week I wanted to share with you, which emphasizes the consensus view that investing in teacher effectiveness is the critical key in improving student learning. I'm also proud to say, as he enters, I think it's his 30th year in the principalship here in Portsmouth, John Stokoe was nominated by the district to be the Middle School Principal of the Year. And from where I sit, it's hard to imagine anyone being more qualified to receive that honor, nonetheless, it's a disappointment he didn't, but I know he's number one in our hearts and minds here in Portsmouth.
You're here.
Good off to John. And you have a memo from Athletic Director Wilson. He outlines basically the facilities request by the New Hampshire Phantoms, basically to have eight games that will run from May through July at our new athletic complex. And then finally notice from Ms. Jenkins, she's a Title I student, she'll be going out on extended leave later in January. And that's it, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Dexter.
Just a question on the revenue coming in for use of turf field. Where does that revenue go? Has that been determined yet?
So Steve, can you, my facility rentals, how we?
It would be, it would be part of the general fund, general fund revenues under facility rentals as part of the budget, yeah. It's not a targeted.
It's not a targeted?
No.
And not targeted for maintenance or eventual replacement of the field. Okay.
We can't even ask?
You can always ask, but we've been.
We have in the past.
We have in the past. You've asked me a couple of years in a row, can we do certain things? And, you know, as we've, as we've, you know, explained a couple of times, being a department of the city, I think as John explained at the meeting of the whole, would ask about revenue, there is, there are pros and cons to being a department of the city and having it all put in together. And some, some years it looks like it's not a good deal, but other years, when we were donor towns, it looked like a swell deal. So that's where it's at, and so it would not be available to be targeted for something else.
Rebecca.
I was just wondering, with the Ed jobs allocation, the restrictions on that, and if you have any thoughts on, on how you?
Well, I think it's, I think you just can't use it for central office, folks, but as long as you use it for teacher money. There are some other guidelines that Steve has about that. We got a subsequent memo, follow-up on that. But I, I don't see a problem in, in using that money to, for FY-12, next year's budget.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
And just, just to remind us, when you mentioned going to the state board, I think Clay had volunteered to go there in January, is that right?
Yes, I did.
Okay, you still interested?
Sure.
Okay.
And in fact, Mr. Chairman, it also calls for a alternate delegate to also.
So if anybody would like to go with you?
Go with me. So if, if anyone wants to go to that on January 15th, and I've done this before, it's, it's a very interesting day.
Okay.
So if anyone wants to go and be the alternate, it's, it's very educational.
Okay.
So if anybody thinks about that later, I mean, we'll send the paperwork in for you, Clay, and then if anyone else wants to go as an alternate.
Okay, all right, great.
That's great, thank you.
Great. Carol.
I just wanted to briefly comment on the article written by Principal Shea. I think he did something really remarkable in this article, because he explained the kneecaps in ordinary terms that anybody could understand. And he sort of explained why maybe we haven't done that well on them, but he doesn't do it in a defensive way. And I think it's just a remarkable article in terms of, you know, really explaining to people about the kneecaps and what they're doing at New Franklin School and what really matters in education. And I would love to see something like this, like, I don't know if we could do something where every two, three months, a different principal would showcase something in the paper from their school, but, you know, I would love to see this in the paper. This article may be tweaked a little bit, but I think it would be, because a lot of people are asking questions about the kneecaps. How did we do? Why didn't we do well? What are we doing? And I, I think he just does, he writes incredibly well, and I think it would be really a positive thing if maybe he and some of the other principals that we have took turns putting articles in.
I'll certainly ask him if he wishes to submit this.
Thank you, thanks.
That's very good. Pass?
Five.
You want to bring it up?
Yeah.
Kent.
Under Robert's rules and State RSA, all board members were given a packet sent by Matt Dwyer, School Custodian Union Representative, and I'd like to make sure that we place the December 10th memo and chart on file.
Okay. So, losing motion to do that, second? Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for that. Okay. All right, district reports. Who's up first?
Principal Stokoe.
I know you have a copy of my report. What I would like to do is just kind of, not read that to you, but kind of walk you through and highlight some of the pieces in that report. The first one is the 5210 Health Program. You'll notice there, there's five different bullets on things, activities that have gone on since the opening of school. First with the kickoff by the superintendent with our faculty about the 5210 program, all the way down to the last one, which is Kiwi Friday. And what Kiwi Friday was, during our Friday morning advisor-advisee period, we gave all the students an opportunity to have a taste of kiwi fruit, some for the first time. And I think overall was very successful. I don't know that they all were going to run out to buy kiwi, but it was a new experience. And again, just a, a way to show them, give them an opportunity to try a different piece of fruit here at school. The second piece is the school climate, and you'll notice in each of those different bullets, I have kind of highlighted the student aspiration condition that that particular activity would fall under. I'm a true believer in the eight conditions of student aspirations. I think this evening, you know, you heard a lot about the new bullying law, and I think the Student Aspirations is a program which we will continue with definitely, because it's a real prevention program for bullying. And that's why I've highlighted those different areas there, from the, the meetings that Sherri Wested and I had with all of our six teams of students during the first week of school. During those meetings, we talked a lot about belonging and the fact that every student has the, the right to come to school each and every morning with a sense of belonging. This is where I'm supposed to be. It's okay to be here, and I don't have to be concerned that someone's going to give me a difficult time. Also during those team meetings, we spent a lot of time on the kneecap assessment, because we were, again, preparing for kneecaps, which kicked off on October 1st. We spent a lot of time explaining to the students the different types of questions on the kneecaps and why it was important that they do their best job on the kneecaps. And we're, we're really anticipating some great results when those come back in January, because again, a lot of time was spent on that, not only in those team meetings, but also by follow-up with the faculty. We purposely this year had our kneecaps only in the morning session of school. You'll notice what the seventh grade team did, they incorporated their I-Walk tour later in the day, take the kids out of the building. They've been testing for 90 straight minutes, some even longer. So that gave them a break later on, and they kind of built in that curriculum on the math and science as part of that kneecap testing time. The next piece, you'll see the Merit Club Breakfast for the first marking term, 303 students out of 491 earned a merit card. Again, a merit card is, a way that you earn the merit card is by good or excellent conduct and behavior in each and every subject that you are scheduled into. It's not just your four core academics, it's each and every subject. And what we find is, when we pass out report cards, the first thing our students will look for is, did I earn a merit card? Not, did I have an A in math or an A in English? They're looking to see, did I have a merit card? Because if I've earned a merit card when I go home, then I can say to my parents, see, I'm working hard. I may have some Cs, that's fine, but I'm working hard, and this proves it because I've earned a merit card. So we're seeing that, you know, more and more students are striving to earn those merit cards. Next piece, you'll see some work about Dream Team, and then all the different after-school activities we're offering. As you know, the middle school dismissal is at 2:00 in the afternoon. That's way too early in the day for adolescents. Therefore, we offer more and more after-school for our students, and because of your support with the late bus, we're able to do that. Our students don't have to worry, if I stay after for chess club, how am I going to get home? If I stay after for intramurals, how would I get home? Because again, we have those late buses that run Monday through Thursday for all students. The next piece is an update on PLC. We are, have designated each and every delayed opening for our PLC work. All of our teams have taken on that challenge for a minimum of 10% increase in math and literacy scores. And as an example, our PE health faculty, one of their, their goals for this year, one of their SMART goals, is actually built into literacy. They do a piece with Northeast Passage on what it's like to be wheelchair-bound, and then after that activity, the students have a writing piece in their PE health class. Those are all scored using our rubric, and then from that baseline data, when they do their follow-up writing, they're looking for what is the increase in that writing. To tie in with that, our language arts faculty, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, this year we have incorporated three different writing prompts throughout the school year. So every 12-week trimester, all students will be doing a writing piece. And they've designated different genres for each marking term. They've developed a rubric, a four-point rubric, which all of the language arts folks are using to score these writing pieces. And again, we're looking for a minimum of 10% increase in those writing scores. The nice piece about these different writing prompts is, those will follow the students sixth, seventh, eighth, and off to the high school. So next year, when the seventh grade English teacher has their groups of students, they'll be able to have those writing pieces right in front of them. They'll know how each and every student now in their classes, day one, how they did on the writing the previous year. So now when a student enters, when a present sixth grader enters Portsmouth High School, they will take with them nine different pieces of writing that have been scored using our scoring rubric. So now the freshman English faculty will now have just a wealth of knowledge on this student's writing, on how that has increased over the years and exactly where that student is at. And we're doing that same thing in the science curriculum with constructed responses. They're doing a minimum of two a year, in some cases, three. Those will follow the students, sixth, seventh, eighth, and off to high school. So it will show how that student has progressed in constructive response in their science. So that's a new piece in the English Language Arts Program. Also this year, we've developed reading classes as an intervention program that are taught by our reading specialists. Again, we're targeting students who are lowest on that scale on the kneecap test. We've also developed some math intervention classes. Right now, they exist in the eighth grade, we're calling it High School Math Prep. Now that's a class over and above my eighth grade math class, so I'm really having math twice a day. And again, we're targeting students who did not do well or do not score well on the kneecaps. Sixth graders just incorporated the same type of intervention program during their schedule during the day. And these interventions are all happening during the day, and that's something that we heard, you know, from the do-fors, that when you're looking at SMART goals and PLC work, that has to happen during the school day. And again, they're not pull-out programs, so we're not pulling someone out of their math class or pulling them out of their language arts class. These are classes over and above the math class or the language arts class. And again, you're having these intervention classes with your regular classroom teachers. And again, we've been able to do that through some creative scheduling, and hopefully we'll be able to continue that in the future. The last piece, what's coming up, there's all kinds of great things, as you saw, going on with technology through that IRA grant. The beauty of that grant, I believe, is all of this work just is very contagious with faculty. Right now, only the math folks and the two social studies in seventh grade have this equipment. Other folks are seeing what they're doing with it. We are in, the middle school is in a prime position for this, because over the next couple of years, we'll be deciding what technology will we put into this new building. There's $620,000 in that budget. We have to make good decisions and have conversations with the tech committee from the board, the tech consultant through the architects, and really make some good decisions on how do we spend that money. Right now, the beauty of the IRA grant is, folks who don't have that equipment are looking and saying, when do I get some of that? When do I get to use that in my classroom? Now, these folks will share, but for this first year of this IRA grant, they have to collect all kinds of data as part of the evaluation. So that's why it's concentrated right now in the math classes and the seventh grade social studies. But again, I think it's going to be, again, just get very contagious with faculty, where folks who are kind of nervous about it are saying, I want to try this. I need to get this technology in my classroom, because I can see where it's making a difference for, for student learning. Couple of other things, our eighth grade, we will be doing the NAEP assessment, that'll be in early February. Our eighth grade kind of gets hit with some extra assessments, because in the spring, just the eighth grade will be doing the kneecap science assessment. The NAEP assessment is something where not all middle schools in New Hampshire are asked to participate. It seems like every two or three years, they do ask Portsmouth Middle School to participate. It'll be one day in the, they'll give us actually a, a random set of students that will participate. It won't be the entire eighth grade. I wish we got results back on these assessments, but we don't. It's basically that national report card, and they'll do a report card on the state of New Hampshire, but we won't get results on our eighth graders or how Portsmouth Middle School did on it. But again, it's something where you're asked to participate, and you definitely say yes. Another thing which came up recently, the state was looking for 20 middle schools and 20 high schools to volunteer to do the eighth grade writing piece of the kneecap assessment online next year. Again, it's a pilot program, and I volunteered for Portsmouth Middle School to do that. What I want to do is be able, I want to see if with students composing at the computer, will we see a difference in their writing results? I believe we will. And that was one of the reasons that I volunteered Portsmouth Middle School to participate. In order to participate, you need to have enough technology where half of the eighth grade can sit and do that writing prompt, and then immediately afterwards, the other half sits and does the writing prompt. As it turns out, we do have enough technology to do that, so we will be doing the eighth grade writing piece online in the fall, and I'm assuming down the road that we probably see the, all of the writing online with the kneecaps. But we have volunteered to do that, and they have accepted our volunteerism. The other two things is the eighth grade New York City trip, they just go back Sunday night. That New York City trip is built in. That New York City trip is built into their curriculum because in eighth grade, we study U.S. history. As part of that, we study immigration. So the students go out and they visit Ellis Island, and they also get a chance to visit New York City. And that, they left Friday morning, and they get back Sunday night. We did have a little stomach virus going around on one of the buses, but they all seemed to make it through, and they're back and everyone is safe. Our eighth-grade French classes, they will be doing their annual trip to Quebec, and that'll be in January. They'll leave on a Friday morning, and they'll get back Monday night. They'll only miss one day of school because the Monday they get back is actually Martin Luther King Day. And the last thing, you'll notice in front of you that you have a hero button. And here's why you have a hero button. Within the last month or so, one of our seventh-grade English faculty, Melissa Provost, has been in contact with Marlee Conway. She is a graduate, a product of the Portsmouth School System. She's in the Navy, and her platoon has recently been deployed to Afghanistan. As part of our Student Aspirations Program, one of the conditions is heroes. So we have sent a number of these buttons to Marlee to distribute to the members of her platoon. And what we are going to try to do is, we're going to try to set up a Skype with her and members of her platoon before the holidays so that our students will be able to wish them a very safe holiday season. And that's why I've given all of you one of our hero buttons. They're on their way to Afghanistan also. And with that, do you have any questions?
Carol?
In case there are people watching or people in the audience who don't know, could you define what ARA is?
Okay, that's the American Recovery Act. It's, I think through the stimulus funds. There were, I believe, a total of 20 grants, and as soon as we know better, in the state of New Hampshire, we were one of the schools that put together a grant, and we're one of those 20 in New Hampshire to receive that ARA grant.
And all of the-
Reinvest in Recovery Act.
All of the technology we saw today, tonight, was through funding-
Purchased through that grant. And you didn't see all the technology, like you saw one of the MIMOs. And the reason they went with the MIMO was, they had looked at a higher-priced ENO board, but they wanted to get the biggest bang for their buck with this $100,000 to put as much equipment and devices in the kids' hands as possible. So they geared back, they went with the MIMO, and as it turns out, that can be used on any surface. And because of that, they were able to get more tablets, more clickers, more document cameras and so on. But every piece of equipment was bought through that grant. All of that equipment is in, and I believe the grant runs through March of 2011. That's when they'll do the final collection of data. And that data collection is something where parents had to consent to their child participating because some of this is done online. So we had to go through that whole exercise with the students and the parents with written consent that they could participate in the actual data collection. Now, it may be that I'm still in the class doing all of this, but I'm not in the data collection. But the vast majority said, sure, go ahead, no problem. And what the, really what they're looking for is, does this equipment make a difference in student learning? That's why they want to collect this data. There was pre-data, there'll be post-data, and what difference does that make in student learning? I know some of the work that we've done with Skyping with authors, I think I've mentioned to you before, I mean, I just see every single student involved in, let's say, the reading of a novel when they're going to be Skyping with that author of that novel later on. And that's not always been the case when every single student in the classroom really gets involved in the novel. But you see it happening. And that's happening because they know at some point, we're going to be talking to that author in real time and be able to ask questions. And you really see the kids get engaged. So that's really the whole premise of the grant. Does this make a difference?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Principal- Principal Roy.
Call me to testify?
Raise your right hand.
I'm just thinking, God, Glee was a repeat tonight, really. I have included in your packet a report, and I'd be happy to answer questions in regard to the outline and the bones that I've included there. We've been focusing on academics, specifically reading, writing, and math. I think it, I gave an update in regard to the SMART goal. We have lots of work to do. Our writing prompt at the beginning of this year indicated that our area of focus for the, and through January of this year, will be on topic sentences and elaboration and evidence. We've aligned, as if you recall from last year, our writing rubric with the Community College Write Placer, which is the English placement test basically for the community college. So we continue to focus our work in regard to that area in terms of community college entry and requirements. That's why we use the Accuplacer. Clearly, we use the Accuplacer also for math and in our reading. I want to say that that is one data point. That's what we use school-wide. It certainly is not what we use. We use multiple measures when we're looking at individual students, so I want to make sure that that's clear. We used our data at the end of last year, 2009, 2010, to really look at our returning students and incoming students in regard to intervention. So we already had data, we already knew who was not performing at the levels that we wanted them to be at. And so we basically created a English class that was focusing on our lowest-level readers based upon the end-of-year data from 2009, 2010. We also hired a reading specialist who is co-teaching that class for the first semester. Second semester, we'll be double-blocking that class. I am going to put a pitch in here, not that there's any inequity in education. Our school day is from 7:30 in the morning to quarter of two. It is unacceptable. I cannot change that. That is not in my realm of power, but I need to say that it is shortchanging my students, and I don't like it. That said, we will be double-blocking that period of time for those English, our lowest-level performers in that English class for a second semester. They will also continue with that reading specialist in a co-tat class. So we're really doubling our financial resources and our time and energy to a small set, basically one-third of our population, quite frankly. Our math data was also abysmal, if you recall from last year, at the end of the year in regard to some of our algebra students. We continue to look at ways that we can intervene in ways that we're going to get the results that we want. So we, at this point, have identified a class of learners that happened to be well-known to us and basically took three months to do a unit on fractions. And I think I included the data there, and it is pretty clear kind of the struggles that we face. Three out of five students are, we're having success with, two are not. That's not acceptable. I don't think it'd be acceptable for you if it was your child. It certainly isn't acceptable to me. We continue to look for what we need to do differently in regard to our curriculum. We're interested in a curriculum that the community colleges are piloting with various high schools. And Steve and I met, I haven't even had a chance to talk to Ed about it, we haven't connected lately due to a variety of other things. So we're continuing to look at curriculum and to figure out what's working and what isn't. So we're getting better. We're making progress. There are miracles happening at 35 Sherman Drive. I assure you, they are. So, you know, it used to be five that were underperforming, and now it's two. You know, and that's kind of why we go to work every day. So I have to say that in the course of really becoming more targeted in what we're doing inside of the building, we're also really extending outside of the building to do a whole bunch of other things. So it's really, we've done a lot of work around the academics. We've created, fortunately for us, we had a period of time that we were using for increased reading, just in addition to their English class. They would also have this 25-minute period, which was really set aside just to read. So what we've basically done have taken that time and really morphed that into a targeted intervention block for additional math and English, language arts work. For students who do not need additional targeted instruction, they still continue to use that 25-minute block of time for their reading, independent reading time. So we're doing what we can with the limited time that we have. Not another day, but I think it just was, sorry. So I have to say that we're using every minute that we can use to do the best we can while we are also trying to keep our students engaged. Because we are asking our students to do the things that are most difficult for them to do. So we really are trying to walk that line of balance. So to do that, a couple of the wonderful things that we continue to do is we have our grant with, which is an ARA grant, but not through the school department, through vocational rehab, rehabilitative services, which is what allows us to do our internship program. We're in the second year of that grant. Fortunately for us, once again, we have the flexibility, we have a job coach that is paid for through that grant, who has been on decreasing time and will be phased out at the end of this two-year grant. But we have co-trained and had a teacher assigned to that person, so we've done cross-training. So when that job coach goes away, we have somebody in-house who has those relationships with our community intern sites and has the procedures and everything in regard to the labor board and all the things that we need to have in place and to have kids working in the community. So our internship program's going strong. We have seven kids out in internships. Scheduling-wise, it was a nightmare, that was my fault. Tried something different, didn't work so well, so we're going back to a different scheduling thing than what we did last year. We have our college-bound program, which is still going strong. We're in like our seventh year. It's awesome, which was, as you recall, a transition program, which is good for us because focus monitoring is focusing on transition when they do their site review, so that's good. And then thirdly, we're, we've become masters at fundraising, and I have to brag about our success because this year, we, I told you last year, we would be leaving the country. And Robert Lister Academy has students who are going to Costa Rica in the spring. And basically, what we did is we took a science class and integrated and double-blocked it with a business class. The science class is really looking at different ecosystems, sustainability, all these different kind of science things. The business class, really the intent of the business class, which we've never had at our school, kids have not had access to those kind of curriculums. What we basically did is have the business class look at how to teach kids to do a capital fundraising campaign and entrepreneurial skills. So basically, the business class's purpose was to fundraise to, for the science class to be able to go to Costa Rica so that those kids are both in the science class and the business class. So the business class started mid-September, and to date, they've, my goal was to raise $15,000 by the end of January. From September to date, they've raised $12,000. So let me tell you, if I ever, talk about miracles at 35 Sherman Drive, if you ever told me that we were going to raise $12,000 in a short period of time, I would have said that that's not, that would be very difficult for us to do, given our population. So I think we're going to meet that goal, which is awesome. The students have, in terms of the entrepreneurial business piece, they have raised over $4,000 in just raking lawns and have learned about repeat businesses, they already have scheduled people for spring cleanup. So it's been a fascinating, complicated venture, but a successful one. And in addition to that, while that's been going on, we've also, the community has just been so generous, I cannot even say what a wonderful thing it has been. Through some of the things that we learned in the business class, which involved blogging, if you go online and type in Costa Rica, Monteverde, we will come up as the second. I mean, it's just amazing. Kids have been learning about marketing through social, using social media, then on YouTube, they have their own Facebook. I mean, it's just amazing. So we've done wonderful things there, but while we've been doing all that, we've also had a wonderful response from the community and have an amazing holiday event planned for our students that the community has donated over $3,500 to us for us to take students to a Broadway play in New York City for their holiday kind of extravaganza. So I have to say, it's been overwhelming, the support that we've received and the press that we've gotten, and we just feel really fortunate that we're in that place. That, by the way, is not what I'm most proud of, though. Because when I was driving to work today, thinking I was going to have a good day, which by the way, I didn't, but anyways, I was thinking about what, I could retire if I didn't have three kids going to be in school, in college, at the same time. I would be able to retire because this is really the most important thing. There is a student that I have in my school who's 16-years-old, who has been coded since he's in elementary school, started at Little Harbor School. You, I'm sure, would know him. I happen to have worked with his older brother, who's now 31, thank you very much, when I was at the high school, and his younger sister, I mean, older sister, when I was at the high school. This student, this is the most, my most glorious achievement. We had this student who, by the way, his goal at the beginning of the year was to learn how to sign in cursive his name, applied to the college program. He's applying to go to our community college, transition college class program. The fact that that student, who I almost kicked out last year, who's a junior this year, believes that he can be successful in a community college class? Are you kidding me? I could like literally go home and retire. Because that does not happen. That does not happen without teachers who are going above and beyond math, writing, and English. That does not happen for kids who don't have any family member who's graduated from high school without amazing things occurring. So it's hard to articulate that without you knowing the student and without you understanding the limitations that that family has and that the history, the history associated with that family in regard to poor school achievement. If anyone had told me that that student would be filling out an application to go to be part of our college program, I would have said, you're out of your mind. No way in hell. I'm scared to death because that student better be successful. Because if he's not successful in that class, I know I'd only have another shot. And I know that what that means is housing projects, continual unemployment, not being able to pay bills. So when we talk about education and, oh, you know, what is my SMART goal for the year? It's really hard to communicate to you folks what that really means and what that really looks like. And I have to tell you that, and I'm not kidding, I said to my staff this morning, I said, do you guys get that? Like, it's just another thing, it's just one of many applications to the college program. I said, but do you get that? Do you get that this kid, you folks, changed the belief system of a student in regard to their ability to succeed in post-secondary education and the need to? That's huge. I mean, that's really huge. So, you know, the Costa Rica, you know, blah, 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 that's all kind of what we need to do, but that, that is something that is, that's something that's just amazing. That's the- That's the, that's the miracle on 35 Sherwin Drive. So, so that's amazing. And I think that I don't have anything more to say about that. So do you have any questions that I could clarify?
Tom?
Just curious, if you could just refresh, because you probably went over it another time, but just the internship program? How long is it? How do you evaluate it? You know, how do you, you know, say this is a success or, you know, move a child to a different internship, getting feedback from the business community, et cetera?
Last year, well, students, we have a series of classes. One is Career One, which freshmen and sophomore can be in, that is really more, those students do a lot of, of the Choices Program, really looking at career planning and going out and doing job shadows. So they go out to the community, they see a lot of different types of places of employment. Then when they're juniors, they have the ability to be placed in an internship. Last year, we have an advisory board to this whole thing. We have lots of different businesses that are willing to take interns. Last year, what we did is, they went out twice a week, and we had a class that was connected to those internships. So when they weren't at those internships, they had like a seminar, if you will. The feedback we got from the employers, kids have to interview for the internship, it's really a mock whole job experience. The feedback we got from the employers, what they, they wanted kids at their place of business for a longer period of time. Last year, they were out two days a week for two hours a time. So this year, we have some students that are out one day a week, all day, some students that are out two days a week for half a day, and some students that are out two days a week for still two hours. It has just been a nightmare, not only for transportation, because by the way, we still don't have a van which was approved for payment almost a year and a half ago. I don't know, you know, so, so just the transportation factor is a nightmare, but it's also a nightmare for everybody, for all classroom teachers, because every, depending on who the kid is and what the internship is, they're missing different curriculum pieces. So just the model, where you're trying to meet the business community's desire and need, and it just really was difficult to integrate with, with the school structure. So we're going back to a different model next year. Students are evaluated based upon their performance, they get a job performance evaluation. Last year, it was fantastic. This year, there's been some, some issues in regard to kids' performance in internships, and those are dealt with, with our intern, our career studies teacher, the job coach, and the employer, and they're really dealt with, as you would deal with it, in terms of an employee. In terms of the evaluation, the VOC Rehab folks will evaluate their pieces of it. For us, I mean, to be frank, for us, we really needed to get the procedural manual down, and we needed to get the relationships in the community, and, and for us, we're good to go now. We can be self-sustaining without support from VOC Rehab. I mean, we have support from VOC Rehab because all of our kids are coded, but we don't necessarily need the, the grant monies to go along with that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Carol?
I just wanted to say thank you for sharing with us your, your feelings about the length of the school day. And I was just curious, do you think we should start later and go later, or do you think we should start at the same time we do? If you could wave a wand and have it be exactly how you want it to be?
I think in terms of equity, it should be like the high school, the high school students, I think it should be from 7:30 to 2:30. And if that's not long enough in regard, I mean, if that's not long enough to do all the things that people need to do for mainstream education, it certainly isn't long enough to do for, for us at, at our school. So basically, our students are 45 minutes, they get released from school 45 minutes earlier.
Now, why is that?
I can't answer that question because it's, I think it's one of those things culturally that has happened as a result of transportation, and that has been, it used to be that way, so it always has been. And I think transportation is a big issue. Our students that live locally in Portsmouth take a regular, you know, Portsmouth bus, and I don't know if that bus that brings them then has to do a different route to take, you know, middle school kids or whoever, I have no idea. So I think it's a matter of, I think there used to be a belief, well, I do think, that there used to be a belief that our kids couldn't tolerate being in school for a full school day, or somehow there had to be a benefit to going to our school or something. I, you know, I think that there was something about, you know, there was a trade-off in terms of whether kids could tolerate being in school for that amount of time or something like that. I don't really have the answer. It's, from my perception, it's always been that way, and I, when I've asked that question, it's come down to transportation.
And thank you for telling us about that one child, who you clearly had a huge impact on his life. That's amazing.
Mm-hmm.
And, and I really appreciate you sharing that with us.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is technology with Dr. Burrell.
Sorry, I have a card that's died, and a ride that's come to get me, and a phone that's died. It's been one of those days. So, good evening. I'm happy to be here to talk to you about instructional technology, and I'm going to do my best to be brief, and goal-driven, and focused on three main areas. First, I'm going to give you a little bit of context to surround the outstanding example of technology integration that you just saw from the middle school people. And then I'm going to talk to you about the Elementary Digital Portfolio Initiative. And finally, I'm going to speak to you about iPad training for teachers that we're doing right now. So, John and all of the teachers have really explained a lot about the, our grant that we, we wrote and were engaged in, and I just want to take it to a little bit of a different level and tell you that this, these teachers should be commended for such a great job that they have done. I have seen a whole lot of teacher growth in this group of teachers. Some of them really didn't have any technology skills at all when they started, and they've really grown quite a bit in that regard. And I think they've done that because the grant has required some mandates and some structure and some deliverables. Every month, the teachers have to meet and talk about what they're doing. They have to post a lesson plan to Google Docs, and the lesson plan consists of an evaluation, outcomes, and it also consists of a reflection that they've done with the kids. They have a certain amount of hours that they have to spend on professional development. They, they collaborate a lot with each other. It hasn't been easy in this building. As John knows, there's some power issues, there's some wireless issues, we've changed technology integrators, we don't have the technician support that we had last year, but through all of those obstacles, they have risen above it and supported each other to do the work. And I'm going to just cite for a minute, to go to Mitch's favorite person, Eli. The other day, Mitch, I was looking at Eli's conditions for change and for innovation, and when I looked at those eight conditions, I realized that this school of John's has every single one of them. And that's why I think that this project has been so successful. There's a real commitment by the teachers to, to stick with it, and to do it, and to finish it, and to publish it, and to get the kids involved, no matter what. I actually talked to the State Director of Technology, Kathy Higgins, this morning, and she is fascinated by the amount of data that has been collected from the grant, the evaluation data, and wants to come visit and bring some other superintendents in New Hampshire to come visit, to look at the progress that this school has made with this grant. You didn't see everything tonight, but they've taken on doing, using Google Docs for collaboration. The kids are using Google Docs for collaboration. Anna, our wonderful technology integrator that we lost last year through budget cuts, really got that moving here in Portsmouth, and now the other schools are using Google Docs for collaboration and for presentations, and also to store their portfolio projects. It's just, it's, it's a great success story that I really think should be captured in some way. The teachers that are using the Quizdom tools in the eighth grade have done a super job of using the MIMIO lesson capture to make some video recordings of the kids solving problems, and also of the teachers showing the way to solve a problem. What's really, what's really important about those videos is that it exhibits the kids' thinking about how they've gone along, and they have actually done their problem. And somebody can examine that and then show them the kind of practice and help that they need to go to the next step. As John knows, we've had a lot of emotions throughout the grant. Every day is different here, but I have teachers now calling me every day saying, "Come over to my classroom, look at what I'm doing. I've really advanced. I'm using this, and I'm not afraid anymore." And so, that's wonderful to see, and I really think that it's because of John's leadership that a lot of this has happened. So, that's really the other side of the picture that I want you to know about. It looks really easy, it looks like they've, they're having fun. It's not just about the equipment in the classroom. It's about that they were disgruntled by the way things were here. They saw a need. There, if you look in our labs, there's old, antiquated equipment. They didn't have technology to use in the classrooms. They said, "I want to do something about this. Let's get together, and we're going to make this work." And so every one of Eli's conditions was really there for this success to happen. So, that's what I have to say about the grant, and I'm going to go on, actually. The elementary initiative. I think you heard from the principals last month that it's a little bit different in every building, based on staffing and schedules. No two elementary schools are the same this year, as far as technology goes. It's based on all of them doing one digital portfolio project during this year. That's the commitment that everybody made. Teachers got together at the end of the year, after school ended, and they sat together in their teams, and they figured out what kind of integrated project they could do, and what kind of ISTI technology standards they could embed. They came up with a time of year that they wanted to do this in the lab. They talked about the kinds of reflections that they would do with the students, and they talked about what kind of content that this would be embedded in, whether it be math, or reading, or science, or social studies. And then they decided whether they were going to store this digital portfolio project in Google Docs, or whether they were going to use a simple folder on a server. So, that's what's going on in elementary this year. What's different between elementary and what we just saw at the middle school? Why is the middle school so successful and so on top of everything they're doing? And why do they have so many teachers that have really come so far so that we can measure that? It's really about planning and collaboration. At the elementary level, because of schedules, there's less time to plan and less time to collaborate. Sometimes, there's a library media specialist that's free to help them collaborate, sometimes there's an integrator that's there. But it's not as consistent as it is at the middle school. The challenge is to find the time to examine the student work by the teachers themselves and suggest new projects based on the findings for next year. And that's just really, really difficult to do at the elementary level, based on schedules. You can find a whole lot more information about portfolios. They've used the same lesson plan template that the middle school has used, they're using some of the same reflection prompts. We actually created a vision of what a digital portfolio is like for Portsmouth. All of this on the, is on the WikiSpaces site that I gave you a newsletter, and in there, there's a URL to the Portsmouth Tech Times WikiSpaces site, and there's lots of information on there about what the digital portfolio template looks like, what the portfolio vision is like. One of our problems is that portfolios means a lot of different things to a lot of different people, and I think we have some confusion here in the district as to what exactly a portfolio is. And so Steve and I talked last year about what we could do, given some of the challenges we had with the elementary level schedule and staffing, and I crafted a, a vision that I have put on that site so that everybody knows what the goals are for the year. And so please, take a look at that. And I also have on that site a little bit of information about a global conference on digital portfolios that actually is being held in Boston this summer. When we were starting to talk about digital portfolios, and what do they mean, and what can we do, and how can we make this effective, I actually joined a group on Google, full of international people that are all interested in portfolios for either resumes, work, K-12, and they're used a lot at higher ed. And I've started corresponding with a lot of them in different places like Dubai, and in Greece, and in all different places around the world. And it's interesting to see what they think about digital portfolios, and because it's such a big thing, and people are using these for assessment, they're holding a global conference on that this summer, right here in Boston. So there's information about registering for that conference and all kinds of things on my Wiki site. So, that's that topic. And the last topic is iPad training. As you saw tonight, and as I'm sure you've heard, we have a great deal of excitement and enthusiasm about the iPads. We have a great deal of desire to learn more about the different apps out there, and more about mobile learning in a global way. Rhonda Johnson, Tara Mary, and I have started doing some of the trainings after school. I think we've done four now. We started with the administrators, and we've done classes at the middle school, and this week, we're doing three classes at the high school. And since I've been here for five years, I haven't seen this degree of excitement from teachers about technology. They really, really like this tool. They really see the relevance of it. I think that it's easy to use. I don't see anybody hesitating and feeling that they can't figure out how to work it. Yesterday, we had an art teacher from the high school that downloaded an app called Brushes, that within about 10 minutes created this wonderful drawing. And at the end of each training session, the teachers have to get up and show what they found, and how they would use this in a whole class demonstration, or they use it with a couple of kids individually in their class. And this teacher did a marvelous job of really showing how you can use art on this. She said she wasn't quite willing to give up all of her supplies in her classroom, but you certainly could do a lot of very good painting and drawing electronically here. So that was great to see. We have, we're doing a lot, showing the accessibility features of the iPad. There's Drag and Dictate on here, so you can actually just speak into the microphone that comes on the iPad, and it will type out the words that you are saying, which is terrific for kids that are having problems. There's tons of books that are free, that can be used at every single level, that people are downloading like crazy. Math teachers were in the training yesterday, downloading brain puzzles that they wanted to use with their kids in the class. Everybody just seems to be very excited about this. So it's been a very good thing, I think, that we have done here with that. I could tell you more about the format of the training, but I told you a little bit about that. They are charged with finding some apps that go along with their curriculum area, and as you know, they're supposed to be using this with, in their classroom, with the kids, either by whole group, by projecting this with a document camera and a projector, or by sharing it with kids in the classroom. document camera and a projector, or by sharing it with kids in the classroom. Here at the middle school, they've had the iPads since last summer. And when I walk into classrooms to look at what's going on in those 11 classrooms that are participating in ARA, I always see a couple of kids using the iPads in one corner, a couple of kids using the tablets in another corner, and the teacher having her projector on with something going on up on the screen. So it truly is a tool that seems to be integrated into what they're doing in the classroom. I didn't mention this before, but as part of ARA, and John knows this, I'm required to do walkthroughs. And every teacher in the grant is required to do walkthroughs. Hazel, who's the external evaluator, has actually created a tool, which we can use on the iPad. And within five minutes, you walk into a classroom, and it asks you questions about, are the kids involved? Are the teachers involved? Is the teacher doing everything? Are they allowing the kids to show what they've learned? So you have different checks, and then we send this data right off to Hazel. And the best part of this is that teachers are also using this themselves. So they're going into classrooms and evaluating each other. And then they're asking each other, "Hey, what did you mean when you were doing that? Did you ever think of using it this way?" So again, it's another way for them to collaborate and share the kinds of things that they're doing. And that's been terrific as well. So the next steps for the iPad training, teachers are asking for professional learning groups to share the apps. They have found that help teach the standards and the visual concepts. And we're thinking of creating user groups in each building after this is over. And they can be led by a tech leader, or maybe not, so that they can start sharing. Yesterday, when we were doing this workshop at the high school, it actually came from teachers at the workshop that they themselves wanted to start these user groups and share within their curriculum areas. You know, it's three hours. It's to quarter six at night. Nobody looks bored. Everybody's focused, right on task, and it's a good thing to see. So that's the iPad training. And I think that's it. Any questions?
Great.
Thank you for listening, and happy holidays.
Any questions? Well, I'll just say, I mean, one of the interesting things you said, which was that when you walk around and you see students actually using the equipment, you know, I think a number of years ago, not too many years ago, you would have done that. You would have seen computers sitting in classrooms and nobody actually doing anything with it.
Right.
So that's really a major change.
It is.
So maybe we should throw out all the computers and just go with these little devices.
Yeah.
So it's very exciting.
It's great to see. There's really a lot going on. And in the newsletter, I did highlight a lot going on at the high school. There's so much going on that I can't possibly write it down or tell it to you. I really suggest that you visit. I mean, call me at any time or anybody else. Make an appointment. You know, give the teachers a little bit of notice, like 48 hours, and then walk in and see what's going on here, because there's a lot of great things going on. And you need to come in and actually see the kids using it. They can do a much better job explaining to you what they're doing than we can as adults, so.
Great. Any other? Okay. Thank you very much. Good luck getting home tonight.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Where are we?
My answer report, Mr. Bartlett. Fairly straightforward this month. There's a couple of carryover highlights from previous months that I've explained. I guess of significant difference, if you look at the paraprofessional line, we work very hard all through the year to try to align and coordinate the placement of specific pairs and specific departments for coding to maximize the available reimbursements from the state and the feds. And sometimes that takes a few payroll cycles and a few months to try to get that aligned fully. So I'm hopeful that these differences are merely alignment issues. But it does point out to me that, you know, some research is needed in the next cycle. So I will be doing that, working with the special ed department. If you go on down the list, you know, substitutes, we have a little bit of a negative showing in substitutes at this stage. But I'd like to point out that we have one custodian who's out on disability, so we have a temporary substitute in taking that place. And that would be charged to substitute line. So there is offsetting savings from the custodial line to the substitute line in that respect. Dental insurance, I've already discussed. Course reimbursement, Susan has already, excuse me, alluded to the iPad training. And I think, you know, Mr. Zadrevac can add a little bit more detail to it, but basically, the course reimbursement professional development money is what's driving that initiative. And they're doing it in groups, and they're doing it early. So the timing is going to be totally different than what, you know, history would dictate. And as I try to remind everybody from time to time, I try to come up with, you know, a five-year rolling history to give us a guideline for this plan. So we're certainly going to deviate from that. I pointed out last month that athletics, that's just the cycle in the coaching salaries, which, as we get through all the seasons, I expect that to even out a little bit more. And let's see. I think that is pretty much anything of note that I hadn't already highlighted in a previous season. Oh, I guess I can tell you about speech. The reason speech is showing is over is that when we did the budget, we had anticipated a certain block of speech services being provided by an employee. That's not happening. It's not in service. So because there wasn't a budget line for it, it's going to show up at the bottom a little bit. That's one of those specialized areas where sometimes we're able to provide it with employees. In some seasons, we have to provide it with contract services. So we're never really sure. So it jumps a little bit from one to the other.
Oops, sorry.
What's making up the energy differential?
Just timing, I believe.
Is it just a timing issue?
It's been a little colder earlier this year, so I'm thinking that that's timing. But again, you give me another month, and we'll be able to, you know, add to that history.
I wasn't sure if it was a temperature issue, or, you know, because we've had-
My gut feeling is it's a timing and temperature issue, yes.
Okay.
Steve, can you just explain the $89,000 item in course reimbursement? Are we out of money and in the hole?
No, no, it's timing.
It's plan.
It's plan. No, the plan is based on a five-year rolling average history of expenditure patterns. If you look, you won't be over until the far-left-hand column is higher than the next-to-the-last column. That's the timing. That's because it's that course reimbursement money with the iPad training. And because it's being done early now, it doesn't follow the typical patterns of, you know, so many courses first semester, so many courses second semester.
I get that. I just wanted to make sure we weren't out of money at this point. Am I right?
No.
There's $71,000 left.
$150,000 budgeted, you've got $179.
Right. Okay.
You've got 71 left.
Because we usually go half and half. Right, Steve? I mean, we've talked, loosely interpreted?
Yeah, I mean, we track it half.
Okay.
I mean, it's a full year.
I hadn't seen this. I just actually, it's plans, so I didn't-
Oh, you know what? I handed them out last night, and I emailed them. You didn't get it as an email, did you?
No.
All right. My bad. I'll get you one. I took the opportunity at the meeting of the whole that I see most of the board members last night, so I put a hard copy in their hand.
Yeah, I didn't get one.
That I didn't see. So my apologies.
Love one in its office mail. Be great. Thanks.
I have mine.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we did part of the old business, and we have something set up here to have a little brief discussion about moving forward on the 2012 budget.
So really, this was put in as a placeholder in light of, you know, the meeting of the whole. I think, based on last night, and clearly at the last workshop session that the school board had around budget, it's clear that we're to go out and was just starting the process with administrators to have them do their, you know, building review, put the budget together over the Christmas break, come back as a collaborative group and kind of work at it, and present a budget to you on January 18th, and show you the impact of a budget at 0%. So that's the work we're going to do. I don't know what other discussion you might want to have. One thing I did want to share with folks, though, is kind of the schedule. The 18th is the night we present our recommended budget, but then we've set out a Thursday first public hearing, and then we're on a Tuesday, Thursday rotation right up until submittal to the city on February 11th. So I just wanted to share this calendar again for folks to make sure you've got those dates.
Look it in.
Yes. Good idea.
So just to reiterate, the timeframe between January 18th and when we need to submit the budget to the city, there's eight meetings, Tuesday, Thursday meetings within that timeframe. I think one of the things that we can think about as we get there is, you know, do we want to continue the same pattern of meetings that we've had? Would we like to, and I've thought about this and had a brief, just today, a very brief conversation with Ed about it, do we want to consider some of those work sessions as a way for us to even talk about the educational metrics that the district's working on that would help us, or help give some insight into the budget, you know, and what kinds of things we're looking at? So and do we want to have all of the same people come before us, all the principals come before us, and certain programs that we've selected out in the past years? And if we do that, what do we want to ask them? It's a little different budget process. We're kind of asked, on one hand, we're asking the administration to, you know, keep an eye on zero. What does zero look like? What is the implementation strategy that they've been trying to work with us in terms of interventions, in terms of professional development? What does that look like at zero? And what does that look like, you know, at some other number that might actually allow them to be successful if it requires more money and make hard cuts in other areas? I mean, I think we just need to have a little bit of an array. So I don't know. But yes.
I mean, what I'd suggest, an approach we might take is, after January 18th meeting, as we hear the administration submit the initial budget proposal, and that they begin to describe the impact of that, that may drive the specific areas that we want to hear more about so that we can understand in more detail-
For more questions.
-how they're going to respond to that. Rather than doing that now-
Than set it up ahead of time.
It may be, it may add color to what the administration presents in the initial budget. So as a thought, that may be how you respond to your-
Mm-hmm. It gives it a little flexibility, so we can respond to what we see as needs.
It's one approach.
Yeah, that sounds okay. Any other? Rebecca?
I just, in Susan Burrell's Tech Times that she gave out, there was a really great quote, and it says, "In order to make full use of this device," talking about the iPods, "in education, a school must have a robust infrastructure. Without a robust infrastructure, students will be left behind in a global society where networking and sharing is the way to nurture students to become independent learners." So I think that is a really wonderful quote when we go into the budget season to keep technology in mind.
Oh, absolutely. Good point. Bring it up then, too. Carol?
I think the idea of talking about the matrix, I like that idea. I think that would be really helpful. I also think we should talk about our goals. We should talk about our goals anyway, just generally. But I think the budget, to me, is directly related to our goals. We need a budget to reach our goals. So I think we should have some kind of conversation about what our goals are and how they might be impacted by whatever the budget ends up being. I mean, I think we have to be right up front. You know, we may not be able to reach all our goals.
Well, yeah, their goals.
Or, you know, and-
Right. Do so-
But how our budget is, I think, affects whether we can reach our goals.
Right. I mean, I do think if you looked at the goals, you'd see, because they've been reporting back to us, you know, periodically that, you know, they're focused on making sure those goals are implemented as best as possible, whatever resources and strategies they have. But my question really is, oh, are you suggesting that maybe, not, during, I hesitate, during the budget process that you want to have a retreat to revisit those goals, or maybe a separate retreat, which we've tried to do twice a year in the past, to talk about goals, but they haven't happened inside the budget process?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. I think whatever you think would be, or you and Ed think would be a good way of doing it, I think, just as long as we-
So maybe another retreat about-
Yeah.
...the goals and revisit where we are, which we've tried to do every six months, roughly.
Yeah, yeah. Do you think that would work? That's good. During the process, during the budget process?
I don't know about that. That's going to be a pretty hefty time. That's going to be, yeah. But yes, we should work on, you know, seeing when people would be available to schedule another retreat, half-day, to talk about the goals. Okay. Anyone else? Okay. So we have three items here under new business. And I'll turn them over to superintendent to brief us on what they are, and we need to consider and vote.
Yes, the first one is consideration and approval of the custodial fact-finding report that you received in your packet. You met with Attorney Flagel earlier this evening, who kind of briefed you on the findings of that report. And we're required to, you know, take a vote and either accept it or reject it.
Okay. Anyone like to word a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
A motion to reject the custodial fact-finding report as presented.
Second.
Seconding. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. We'll do these as roll call votes. Carol Chellman?
Yes.
Rebecca Emerson?
Yes.
Dexter Legg?
Yes.
Kent LaPage?
Yes.
Mitch Shulman?
Yes.
Tom Martin?
Yes.
Leslie Stevens?
Yes.
Clay Hayward? Okay, thank you. Moving on next is consideration and approval of the elementary school facility needs assessment.
Yes, so I provided a memo that kind of outlines, I think, the process that's taken place here to recommend, basically, a firm to conduct an elementary school facilities assessment. I will be recommending Dor and Whittier Architects out of Newburyport, Massachusetts. What you should know is there's been a two-part process that's gone through here. We had five proposals received. School and city staff screened those proposals. They selected three actually to come in and do a full-fledged interview with the screening team. The selection committee comprised of school board member Tom Martin, business administrator Bartlett, facilities manager Ken Lynch, and some city staff member Dan Hotry was interviewed as well. So among the three firms, they looked at their qualifications, their proposed approach to the project, whether they had any successful experience in doing this in the past. Basically, the experience and availability of the team, the people to do this work, and basically cost and projected timeline to accomplish the work. They went through that process. We scheduled a meeting where we met with the Subcommittee of the Facilities Group. So Clay Hayward and Kent LaPage were able to join us. We kind of walked them through that process. And I think everybody's in agreement that this firm, Dor and Whittier, evidenced strong skills in all the categories. But we thought they'd be especially strong in leading us forward, given how they've helped districts move that agenda forward. And so that's my recommendation.
Okay. Motion to accept the recommendation of Dor and Whittier Architects?
Second.
Any discussion on this? Dexter?
I think there was a negotiation that took place, and it, I believe, it's just-
It's still in contract, or is it?
Yeah, it's still pending successful negotiation, but it's within budget, Dexter.
Oh, thanks.
Within budget.
Okay. So could you remind me what the budget was?
$50,000.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Is that split, half the month?
It was CIP money, two years.
Right, okay, okay.
Okay.
Great. Anyone, anything else? Okay, so let's take a vote on that. Yes. Carol Chellman?
Yes.
Kent LaPage?
Yes.
Rebecca Emerson?
Yes.
Dexter Legg? You're not sitting in the way my form reads. I'm sorry.
[laughing]
Mitch Shulman?
Yeah.
Tom Martin?
Yes.
Leslie Stevens?
Yes.
Clay Hayward?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. And the last is the consideration and approval of a CHIPS advisory committee for the new middle school project. Mr. Bartlett?
You may recall that when we had multiple discussions about the middle school project and- school project in the JBC, part of what we were able to do is get an extra 3% for doing the comprehensive high-performance school criteria as presented by the New Hampshire Department of Education. They have a, a couple of requirements and one of them is that we have an advisory committee. And because I believe they're probably not used to having, all the districts having JBCs, they didn't change their language in that respect. So it says that the advisory committee needs to be approved by the school board as opposed to the JBC. And so what I, I sent a memo and we had discussed this earlier, is that operationally it would consist of staff members close to the project and the district. So it would be maintenance director Lynch, it would be clerk of the works Hatrie, myself, and we had talked about having a volunteer from the board. And in the very beginning, board member Stevens had volunteered and I think it makes perfect sense because being a member of the JBC, she would be right there up in the forefront and it would, it would make for a much more efficient process. So I, I am requesting through the superintendent that, that you approve the committee as, as we presented it.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, we'll take a vote. Can we do this one as a voice, just a general voice vote? So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Congratulations, you're on another committee.
Add to the list.
So, committee reports. JBC.
So a very brief update, since I reported to you last, we, the JBC had two significant milestones. The first is November 21st. The committee representatives presented a parade of plan to the planning board and the planning board has approved that plan. And that's the last major requirement that we have from, from the city perspective.
Great.
And the second major accomplishment was the construction documents are complete. Bid packages are being put together. So we're at the, near the end of the design development phase.
Mm-hmm.
Bids will go out the first of the year. Bids will be received by the first of the year and we expect to break ground this spring, which is on schedule.
Mm-hmm.
And the, and the last piece, I would say, is I think the committee is cautiously optimistic that we will, when we see real numbers for the first time, that we will be within budget. And, you know, we'll know for sure when those bids come in, but I think the committee feels pretty good about it. So unless you have anything to add or, or if there are any questions.
All right. Are you enjoying the process?
Yeah.
You are? Good.
Well, so what was, so what was interesting is now that you asked-
Now that you mentioned it.
No, as I, as I listened, as I listened to the presentation about the, the math, the math and social science project, what struck me is we will be renovating and adding to this school that will allow the students to continue that sort of stuff so they can walk out the door and be a part of Portsmouth-
Of the community.
And part of the community.
Right. Excellent. So you're having a good time?
We're having fun, are we having fun?
Well, we had the issue with the blue, but I got beyond that.
I had to get my way on that.
Yes, you did. Yes, you did.
And I did.
You did.
Delete that for the record.
You can tell us about that later.
It was a color issue.
Oh, okay. And then policy.
Most of them we did tonight, so there isn't really a whole lot beyond that. We're just continuing to work on the list of must haves and we presented one tonight that's a first reading.
Just a reminder, if you'd like any issues on the agenda coming up in the future, just to let Ed know. Try to get it on in a timely manner.
Ed, did you want to give a heads up on the, just issues surrounding building, surrounding building use?
Yeah, well-
Just a heads up.
Right, so, so one of the things we're doing is we're working on the facilities use policy. And it's in process and what's recommended, Attorney Sullivan came over, met with the policy Subcommittee Kathleen and a researcher, essentially, if you read that memo, they're asking us to call a moratorium on any additional building use until we've essentially clarified that policy. It really has to do with creating a forum, you know, when you, when you open up your buildings, they have to, you create a forum and you have to be content neutral in the creation of that forum. And so we're, you know, we're working to look at various policies. So anybody who's on the books is in, they're fine. The Phantoms are in, this ballet, there's a lot of things settled, but we're not going to be, until you finally approve an updated policy accepting any other facility rentals. Is that what you meant, Carol?
Yeah. Is that policy coming?
It's in process.
Yes, it's in process.
Okay. Very good. Motion to adjourn?
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.